Ms. Butts.
Here.
Ms. Sherry.
Here.
Mr. Gordon.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Here.
And Ms. Frye.
Our first order of business is approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. If there are no omissions or updates, I move for adoption.
Second. Ms. Butts.
Yes.
Ms. Sherry.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
And Ms. Frye.
At this time, because there was no joint finance of human resource committee meeting, I moved to temporarily suspend the regulations of the Board of Trustees in Article Nine and request and referral resolutions to committees to consider the following resolutions.
Second.
Ms. Butts.
Yes.
Ms. Sherry.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
And Ms. Frye.
Yes.
Well, we have our first order of business, Mr. Malcolm, if you would like to give us an update. You got all dressed up for us today.
I gave him twelve and a half minutes. It might take that long to introduce all your staff members with you today.
Well, see, I was gonna bypass the full introduction, but knowing that I had to present to the trustees, I had to get my back up and the IT team, you guys can raise your hands real quick. The rest gave me twelve and a half minutes, which will start after this slide. What I'm gonna do is just give you an overview, because we can go forever into the details. But the CPL IT team is made up of three distinct groups. Our Creative Tech Unit, which are developers, our immersive learning, our high-end programming, our business developers, our Tech Central, which you guys are already familiar with, our patron-facing technologists, trainers, Makerspace. Then we have our techs and our engineers, who are pretty much behind the scenes that you probably don't see a lot, but without them, none of this would be working. I always show this. I showed this when I did the complete presentation to all our team members beginning of the year. Who knew that this technology department, this team, was started in nineteen sixty-five? With the Uniback, MCR, IBM buying for introducing technology here at the library. I know you're the patriarch trustee, Gordon, but I don't think you were around during that.
That's sixty-five.
But from that and look at where we are now. So CPL has always been on the forefront of technology and the library space. So when I came here, I'd say when I started in January, I had to take in a lot, because at that time, we didn't have a proper CPL IT team dedicated to this library. It had been so many years without that. So a lot of things that naturally occurred were in flux. We've looked at it from the approach of establishing a foundation. We all know when we build new homes or buildings, we better start with a good foundation. And that starts with finding staff. So through two thousand and twenty-two, I was able to bring on Tony Long, and I will tell you, he's the best senior director in this library. Yeah, I see someone. Tony Long is the best senior director. Thank you so much. But without him, I'm telling you, we wouldn't be anywhere close to where we are now. We started our proper team in January of this year, and in five months, we've done some remarkable things. So the other part of what we were approaching this as was stabilizing, stabilizing what we have at CPL today, along with adding our, our resources, our staff. We had a lot of outdated systems, as you know. We have a lot of just small issues that have grown over the years. Latency at our branches, meaning internet drops and things of that nature. We had to renovate some office space and get it prepared for proper staff to be in there. We had to develop relationships with our community partners, things of that nature. Then, as we moved through two thousand and twenty-three, the rest of this year, we're looking more at our innovations. What are we gonna do to push and make sure CPL is at the forefront nationally as far as libraries and our technology? So that's looking at our innovations around immersive learning. That's looking at making sure our staff learn what tools that they have at their hands and what we can do with them, and expanding on what we already have in place. So I'm gonna go in some more details here real quick. Some of our objectives is power automation, business automation. We have a lot of paper and manual processes here at the library. We have to automate those. This is just standard operating procedures across all industries, and we are no different. So that's why we have our CTU, our Creative Tech Engineers, to start developing, and they have already started developing and automating a lot of our manual processes. Increasing bandwidth and performance at our branches is very critical. Tech Central two point oh, which will be the redesign of Tech Central to meet the different needs of our patrons. Tech Central was state-of-the-art when it started. Now it's time for that refresh. One of the things that the hub ribbon cutting yesterday, we talked about is meeting spaces. My daughter was coming down here over her winter break to study. I really realized how this building doesn't have meeting spaces or study rooms that are, you know, pretty much standard. We have that at Hub. We have it at West Park. We have it at Jefferson. We need to start looking at that in Tech Central two point oh, maybe part of that. Expanding our Wi-Fi, I've talked a lot about that. We need to be able to help our patrons and the citizens who pay for CPL to connect and be connected. Our biggest issue isn't the availability of internet connection. It's the affordability of it. I mean, it's like, you know, fifty to seventy-five to a hundred bucks a month is gonna matter to people. So we need to be able to increase that availability to our students as they're doing their homework and able to do things of that nature. CPL Play, I could talk about that forever, but I will get to that in a second. Staff, technology, education. We gotta get our staff up to speed with the tech that we have. They were throwing technology at them. They weren't properly trained. We're gonna get to that this year and start training our staff so you guys could be more prepared and better equipped to utilize what we have. Windows seven, we could talk about that forever. We're getting them out. Community partnerships are very important. Been busy at the director's request, working with our community partners around the digital divide and the availability of, of internet access and learning. We're very involved with Aspire Program, which includes the county, training people in Microsoft programs, and getting our community ready. And then we're gonna be doing some immersive experiences. Five-month accomplishments, real quick. Two hundred patron staff Windows seven replacements. We started training. We've closed out over four hundred Help Desk tickets. Somebody who's managing that right now. And that is big. When I came here, we had two hundred-plus Help Desk tickets. So I'm stretched over a year, year and a half. We didn't have enough people to even trust these. We're down to now keeping our tickets within five days, you know? So it's not months of tickets out there, five days. And if it goes beyond five days, you guys should be screaming at me. We can make sure that's handled. Standardizing our technology, our F and P technology standards for computers, displays, staff laptops, our staff as the F and Ps roll online. The full-time staff have laptops now, so they are mobile. They have the devices. They need to do their jobs. Conferences, we've had two staff at Games Developer Conference, which is huge. We have one at the N- N- N ten conference, and thank you. So we are doing a lot in five months. And again, our staff has only been online since January.
Nice.
So what's going on right now? A lot. John Skurdic would say, I'm moving too fast, but that's okay. John, you know I can't slow down. We're doing immersive experiences and learning. Jungu is leading our immersive technology development, and I'm so happy to have him on board, too. We stole him out of Chicago, or he kind of landed in our lap spot in Chicago. But developing and highlighting what we have best that the world and the rest of this country should know about and our patrons should have access to.
Explain holographic.
Jungu, explain holographic.
We know what a holographic is, but just tell us what you do at the library. He's gonna guess. Do you want me to?
I'll explain it. These are, we haven't gotten to that level with our chess collection yet. But we're building off of, one, how to expose our chess collection, where it's more interactive, where it's publicly available. And what we're gonna do with it is gonna kind of change as, from month to month, from year to year. So it's not ever gonna be a finished product. We plan on all of our technology initiatives to be ongoing. So when you can look at a chess collection and move it and touch it virtually on the screen or in your hand without actually touching the real piece, that's part of what we can do with the holographic experiences. Half of our team, we were over at. Well, we were at Case Western Reserve University. Again, meeting with them, trying to understand their approach. Case is leading the world in the development of holographic anatomy. Being able to explore the body to a different level than you used to be able to with cadavers or that you can. And moving body parts around and going into layers from skeletal on out, back and forth. So being able to have that resource in our backyard and take advantage of that and how they're utilizing this is only gonna help us become better at how we can present certain aspects from the library's perspective to our patrons.
Thank you.
So that's what we're trying to achieve there. Tech Central two point oh redesign is starting, and Suzie's leading that charge. Our Tech Central, well, I call it, I just put a screenshot on there to give you an image. We're gonna have a technology van that's gonna be community-driven. This van is gonna be utilized for training, for festivals, for everything technology-related. So if you can imagine, we can go out into the field to rec center or to a senior center, giving classes, giving basics on, hey, here's how you can do online healthcare. Here's our telehealth or tele- telemedicine. Here's how you should be looking at your banking. Where we can meet our community where they are without them having to come down here or even going to a branch. The Aspire Program, I spoke about real briefly there. Extending Wi-Fi from the CPL campuses is really something big with me. And this is just, again, a pilot that we will be doing. So these circles, the center of these circles are branches. So at the left there, it's a hundred thirty-first branch. And if you can see at the top here, we have a part of Mount Pleasant coming in. So this is only a quarter of a mile extension from the branch itself. The one on the right is Fulton, Brooklyn. You see how close they get? I wanted to give you just a visual of how many streets and how much distance a quarter mile could cover. Now, hopefully, we'll be able to push it a little further than a quarter mile, which I think we can and will. But this is what we're trying to do as far as giving the CPL signal outside the walls, where people don't have to lean up to the glass or sit in the parking lot for that matter. So again, we're gonna be expanding on that as we go along. Summer learning experience, this is going on today, and Tristan's been driving this with CMSD, the City of Cleveland Rec Centers, and CPL. We'll be participating with the others on here in June through August. Gaming experience. So students will be at three of our branches, Nottingham, Memorial Nottingham, of West Park, along with which other?
For City of Cleveland Rec Centers and the East of Prattville Center.
So there'll be four or five other locations involved with this. And this is three hours a day, every day, Monday through Friday. And this is important. And why is it important? Quite frankly, I look at it personally, without my old-school Commodore sixty-four and running a random mall when they open and being in that game room, which we thought was just wonderful. That was an inspiration for me that you realize many, many years later, like, man, this was my beginnings. There are two hundred and forty universities that offer scholarships, five thousand-plus student athletes. That's more than Division One men's basketball players. So there's a lot to it. That young man in the green here up there, he won ten thousand dollar scholarship here at CPL with Denzel Ward. Make them look great. Yes. And he's what, a junior now?
Freshman.
He's a freshman. Oh, my gosh. So he won the competition here. These are important to our DNA.
Wow.
Studio four seventy redo. Studio four seventy was online before the pandemic, and directors instructed us to bring this back to life. This is an actual picture of Studio four seventy some years ago, when they were over in the main building. So we're looking at redesigning that for safe space, the lounge for the teams. I do see teams in and out of the main building a lot here. I'm like, where these kids come from? So we need this in place for them. That will be online also this year. These are the last couple of slides here. CPL Technology two thousand and twenty-two. That is an absolute mess.
A hot mess.
Hot mess. But they're actual pictures. That picture on the right, actual picture of one of our rooms. And, you know, it should never be like that.
It looks like.
Picture on the left there is Union, Union. And that was only a few weeks ago. You see those white pieces of paper?
Yeah.
Computers down.
Computers out of order. That's gonna be done, that's scheduled for the twenty-third of May, twenty-third of May. And we only have a few left. Twenty twenty-three.
A lot different.
So the picture on the right, as our F and Ps are, are coming online. That's how the racks will be looking, and that's how they are looking now. And we're gonna keep them that way. It's important to have that clarity and the neatness, because it's part of your maintenance. That picture on the left is Sterling. And I, I will say, I did get a little watered up when, who's Sterling? She sent that, and I was just, she was so happy. I could read it through her email and sent the picture. I was just like, wow. That was the day of the change-out and replacement of those computers. So those are all our brand-new computers. Kids were already sitting there. I couldn't believe it. It was just, I thought it was the greatest thing.
So John, is it all your staff who maintains the racks and the inventory, or are you working with also a vendor to help? That's a lot of branches and.
Yes.
Okay.
So we still are missing a couple key positions. One is, is our network engineer, whose responsibility would be to ensure those racks and the infrastructure stay in order. We do work with CleveNet, getting them online. But once we have our engineer, we hope to just keep them to the level that they should be at. CPL IT is certified. Certified what? But we are certified. This is very important. I had to highlight this. Our staff are either certified, and you can see there, Melissa, Jungu, Tony, Tristan, all completed their certification or PL nine hundred, which is the Power Apps. And these are real certifications. This isn't something you sit at home and do. You have to study, because you will fail them many times. I have done that. And they just gives our team that level of confidence and knowledge and assurity that we can do the job that we're signed up for. I know the rest of so many of our other members are gonna be taking Azure class and Azure test coming up. These are important to make sure that we're staying abreast of current technologies. And I think it's, I gotta give my quote here. Everybody knows I'm always stuck in sports and cars, but this is events on party. Individual commitment to the group effort, that's what makes a team work. And that's how I look at our CPL IT team. It is a group effort. Everyone's input and opinion matters. I'm depending on them to be the experts that they are. I'm so grateful to have people on this team who were not on this team. They were in the library. And we found them. I don't know where, how that happened. We got L'Oreal over there, who was hiding out at Fleet, and it's just a wonderful technician. We got Terrence over here, who's coming up with various ideas. And just real quick, I know I'm at the end of my time and went over my twelve minutes. Terrence, can he, he's been shelving how long?
Long, we don't remember. From seven, seven, oh, seven to twelve, thirty-one, twenty-two.
So the insight he brings to this team while we're doing things is just, you know, we couldn't ask for more. Because he was able to come up quickly and say, John, or Tony, we need this. It'd be nice if we can do this right at our computers or right at the shelves and scan these books that were on hold instead of having someone push a truck all the way down full of books, push that truck all the way back up full of books. Give it to the staff where they can work and do the work right there on the floor with the tablet and the scanner. So these are just creative things that I personally would never know. I'm not a librarian. But you depend on as a team works. So I'm done.
Oh, wonderful.
Wow.
I had talked to the director, because I didn't know what I was talking about. And he had this dream about doing exactly what you've been doing, John. And he put me on the selection committee. And that's the first time I got to speak, John. I was so impressed at that time, and I talked to the director.
One year and five months.
You can do anything you've done in five months. Somebody already look at that as a model, I heard. We have people here already that need to grow. Instead of going out somewhere, take forty, forty days to try to find somebody. You've got a direction and a plan. And I can truly say, because I've witnessed it, the partnerships that are involved. That's, that's what the director articulated to me. Your every word, CPL is every word. You owe honor for what you're trying to do, even though some of the places that you go to are boring. People don't know what they're talking about. I'm not gonna call it any names. The fact of the matter is, you can't play if you're not present. Just as simple. Present the world that we live in. So mine is basically congratulations, you know, everything we said a year ago.
And more.
Selection committee. With director's vision, plan, and trying to find somebody that's fit. It's obvious that it's coming true in less than two years. I'm honored.
John.
I had a vote to understand where you were coming from. And for being from West Virginia, I've voted for you twice. But thank you, John.
Yeah, John's done an unbelievable job. And it's been a rocky road. I mean, so for trustee Sharron and trustee Friar to understand how CleveNet fits into all of this and where, how we've been able to move and kind of separate ourselves. We did have to start our own IT department, like, by itself, with John starting pretty much as the starting piece and then adding on different parts that he could find from the library to add into it. And that's why, you know, we're having to, we have been trying to continue to make these, like, you know, kind of moves and movement to the different things we want, but we were not able to do it, because we just didn't have the technology foundation to do it. And now he's here, and he's got everything, except for there are a few more positions that he needs to, we're talking about later on in the resolution, to get him to that next step. That's where we can, can't do the People's University without being able to do it virtually, right? And we just don't have the pieces to do it. We just don't have the skills. But we have, he's been able to put so many other things in place, right, that we're gonna be able to do. And I'm really excited about, you know, we talk about, for example, trustee Butts, the interactive piece. Just imagine taking our chess collection, which is the best in the world, but no one knows about, and then making it interactive work. School kids can come, and they will see these games and other things that they can move around the chess pieces and do things kind of like, just like you would do from a holographic standpoint. That's what we need to do to really kind of take us to that next level.
Just keeping away from that cadaver.
There won't be any bodies in here. No bodies.
That was my only other question. You said there were several. A network engineer was one, but you didn't say who else you're helping for.
We need a couple more Creative Tech Engineers, the developers. We need managers, so Tony can be relieved of managing the, our techs day-to-day. So it's only four, four other positions that we're looking at right now. I'm sure we will bring in some consultants or some resources in and out as need be. But I think once we fill the plate that we have, we'll be in a much better position. One last thing I'll be remiss, and I think a lot of people, you guys hear this all the time. This was director, one of his first initiatives to me was around getting our Cleveland Public School students' library cards. Those are all integrated in their student IDs now. It's been a rocky road more for with CMSD because of some changes they clearly have internal. But that's thirty-five thousand students that have a CPL card attached to their student ID today.
Yeah, that's just great. It's automatic.
Yes.
Yes. And that was something I worked on for six years and we could not get done, and John got it done in six months.
I need some money.
If I can jump up here, too, because I like to give the historical perspective on this. It is a very human thing for an institution to be, you know, they, my favorite line when I was in high school was a professor who used to say, nothing fails like success. That when you're on the cutting edge and way out front of everybody, as the Cleveland Public Library was, when CleveNet got created, it didn't get created in Avon Lake or Solon or, or Lake County somewhere. That stuff all happened here. But what happened with our success is we ended up having, quite frankly, our sort of power base and our intelligence focused on the outside and sort of ignored one of my major bugaboo, says the fiduciary duty this board has to one of the world's most important central collections. And so the way to think about it is, what Kmart did, or Walmart, or any of those guys did first, is they got all their point-of-sale stuff. And the idea that every one of their stores should be connected on point-of-sale information was really important. And that's what CleveNet was. We basically started from scratch and built what is the country's largest interactive. We basically started from scratch and built what is the country's largest interactive cooperative system for what I would call retail. What the ordinary library circulation, ordinary resource management is. And then as, you know, Windows and GUI and Internet took over, we did the same thing. We kind of built on that. But we're doing similarly just retail out there so that the Internet that was going to Avon Lake didn't reflect that this was the library that it was. It basically retail worked the same in both places and that's where CleveNet was thinking about. And that says not to defame or reduce the importance of CleveNet. It saved this community in its time, a hundred and fifty million dollars. I mean, that's for most of these libraries, a fifty thousand dollar budget cut is brutal. And we've saved the greater Northeast Ohio area something. And it's probably in today's dollars closer to quarter billion dollars in savings. But in that, like any other institution, and one of the jokes that I got from one of our newest foundation board members, he said, when we, when I said People's University to him and how we got to that, he says, so are you going to get bureaucratic and incapable to change, just like most of the universities are? And he said, you know, the biggest problem in my university, and I forget whether he's Duke or something like that, as he said, is that everything becomes its own fiefdom and its own and resistance to change becomes university wide. And he said, so is the People's University a place where resistance to change is system wide? And I said, I hope to hell not, but that's a nice thing, a nice thing to think about. And to a large extent, what John and you all are working on in the tech part of this place is making sure that doesn't happen. The way fiefdoms go out of existence is when somebody tears the walls down because they've made things better with the walls down. And that's pretty much what your charge is in the tech area of this, of this library. And the most difficult thing for me when I go to national stuff is to watch, for example, now obviously the New York Public Library has ten times the budget we've got and ten times the philanthropy we've got. But what their little tech department does, I mean, it literally creates widgets for individual customers. You know, you need, you do that all the time. Oh, we can get, and they, they will create the widget for, for the library patron so that they don't have to do something. And that, that's really amazing, but there's no reason we can't get there. We've got the same sort of resources and skills and, and wonderful people like you all. So yeah, maybe we got in a hole that John's dug us out of now, but we got there for good human reasons. We're not out of it yet. And I'll tell you that the little personal story, obviously West Park Branch was my first branch as a kid. I think I was there when I was five years old. And but part of the reason I was fascinated by it is my grandfather, when I was four, took me to this building or not the, the main building first. And then I started realizing what the potential of libraries were. But at the dedication of the new West Park, I'm out there and the program was going into my time watching the Tottenham Hotspur's game. And quite frankly, I wasn't sure. I said, you know, there's got to be some library patron who'll want to do what they're doing and at the same time check the score somewhere. And so John caught me, I think, or it was you, John, or somebody else caught me and they go, what are you doing? I said, the Hotspur's game is on. So as we're doing, the program is over, but we're showing off and walking around. And I stopped for a minute just to, I accessed one of the new computers and, and watched the Premier League for about five minutes. So, but thank you, John, and we really appreciate it. And all of you, you're on a great team and we're glad to have you.
Thank you. We're now going to move into the finance committee report. Trustee Corrigan, please.
Yes. Resolution, hold on a second. There we go. Exhibit one is a resolution to accept the gifts for the month of April. Whereas the board received gifts of money, library service enters and tech resources miscellaneous non monetary gifts from generous citizens. Resolved that the gifts described in the gift report for April two thousand twenty three, the accepted upon conditions connected with said gifts in accordance with section thirty three seventy five forty K of the Ohio Vice Code. So moved.
Yes.
Ms. Carrie.
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan.
Yes.
Ms. McReagan.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
And Ms. Friar.
Yes.
And I'd just like to know, Carrie is joining us virtually. She's a little under the weather, so we decided to keep her away from all of us.
I'm, I'm here and available if you have any questions.
Okay. Exhibit two is the year two thousand twenty four tax budget. Whereas the Ohio Vice Code requires the board to submit its tax budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty four to the Board of the Cleveland Metropolitan School District on a report June first twenty three. Whereas the code requires the Board of the Cleveland Metropolitan School District to adapt and submit the library's two thousand twenty four tax budget to the county fiscal officer before July twenty 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 three. Whereas the code permits the county budget commission to waive the filing of tax budgets, provide alternate tax budget information forms are filed, provided alternate tax budget forms are filed. Whereas the commission has requested the use of the alternate tax budget forms. Whereas the financial needs of the Cleveland Public Library from tax sources for fiscal year two thousand twenty four have been determined to be at least sixty nine million four hundred forty one thousand. Now therefore be resolved that the year two thousand twenty four tax budget and alternate tax budget information forms for the Cleveland Public Library presented to the Board of the Metropolitan School District and the Kaya County Budget Commission as required by the Ohio Vice Code. So moved.
I'm sorry, the second.
Trustee Friar.
Ms. Butt.
Yes.
Ms. Carrie.
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan.
Yes.
Ms. McReagan.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
And Ms. Friar.
Yes.
Exhibit three is the Fifth Amendment to the year two thousand twenty three appropriation. Whereas the code provides for the amendment of an appropriation measure when necessary. Whereas now deemed necessary to amend year two thousand twenty three appropriation measure, which complies with the amended official certificate of estimated resources received from the Budget Commission dated May tenth, two thousand twenty three. And whereas the aggregate, aggregate of all appropriation classifications does not exceed the total amount submitted to the commission, now therefore be resolved that the sums indicated from the Fifth Amendment to the year two thousand twenty three appropriation schedule be approved. So moved. Carrie, is there something specific we should note here on this?
Um, no, nothing specific. What we're doing with this appropriation is moving the funds for the Sterling Branch from the non taxable bond funds into the building and repair fund. And we are appropriating funds for the Woodland Project budget increase of a hundred and forty thousand dollars and the MLK project budget increase of five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Great. We can take the vote unless there's other questions.
I do have another question. I know it's a nominal amount, but CleveNet fines and fees, given we're a no fee district, I'm just curious what that entails.
Um, under the appropriation?
Yes.
Um, we have a custodial fund for CleveNet where we collect the online bill payments monthly. And then we distribute them monthly. So we do it on a month end basis. So that fund acts like a custodial funds where we take the funds in and then they go right back out. It's for the payments that all the CleveNet libraries make. They, they're centralized to CPL.
Ah, I see.
Yep. So even though we don't take them, other libraries.
Other libraries still do.
Yeah, we're holding it for them and then we disperse them monthly.
And the vote, Ms. Butt.
Yes.
Ms. Carrie.
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan.
Yes.
Ms. McReagan. Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
And Ms. Friar.
Exhibit four is a resolution to renew the OCLC cataloging world share ILL and access subscription services. Whereas the library has purchased OCLC cataloging records for many years from OhioNet, a subsidiary of OCLC. And whereas the Cleveland Public Library's interlibrary loan and resource sharing services use the OCLC software and require access to OCLC World Cat database. Whereas the Cleveland Public Library acquires OCLC cataloging records and resource sharing on an annual subscription basis. Whereas OCLC is a sole source provider for OCLC cataloging records and resource sharing services. Now therefore be resolved that the board approves a subscription renewal for the period July one, two thousand twenty three through June thirty, two thousand twenty four, for the OCLC cataloging and metadata subscription of two hundred ninety four thousand sixty nine dollars and eighty eight cents. And the OCLC world share ILL, that's interlibrary loan subscription of seven thousand nine hundred and sixty two dollars and sixty cents for a total amount not to exceed three hundred and two thousand thirty two dollars and fifty cents, with three hundred thousand four seventy five fifty four being charged to the general fund account, one four one four zero zero five three dash five three eight zero zero, library material control and one thousand five hundred and fifty six dollars and ninety six cents being charged to the CleveNet special revenue fund account, two three one three zero one zero three dash five three eight zero zero, library material control. And I think that may be a typo because I don't think they're both the same fund. But in any event, be it further resolved that the executive director, CEO, or is designated is authorized to enter to such agreements, execute other instruments or documents necessary appropriate to effectuate the terms of this resolution, subject to the approval of the Director of Legal Affairs. So moved.
Yeah, the five three eight zero zero is the library material control object code. So it's being charged to both the general fund and then to the CleveNet special revenue fund to that object code, library material control.
Great. Thanks. I appreciate the explanation, Carrie. Also, I was just going to say for our newborn members, so you know, again, a history thing. OCLC based out of Columbus was Ohio Colleges. I think the original name was Ohio Colleges L. I forget what the L was. Ohio Colleges Library.
College Library.
Computers. And, and quite frankly, Ohio was on the cutting edge of all that early computerization through what the Ohio Colleges were doing with their libraries that then the public libraries were part of. And OCLC is now not just a sole source for us, but a sole source for about three fourths of the world on cataloging and the electronic aspects of cataloging. And so the fact that we were one of their first public libraries is as far as I know. And it's kind of a continuing thing. Again, you'll get bored with me talking history all the time, but our connection to them is just as significant as our founding of CleveNet. And so I'm always glad when this is up every year and up for us to approve.
Ms. Butt.
Yes.
Ms. Carrie.
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan.
Yes.
Ms. McReagan.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
And Ms. Friar.
Yes.
Exhibit five is a resolution authorizing amendment to the Greenwood Moody Nolan for design services for the Huff Branch. Whereas the board approved the selection of Moody Nolan to provide architectural design services for the library's new Huff Branch for a total fee of forty five, four hundred fifty seven thousand four hundred ninety dollars. And the library Moody Nolan entered into agreement for architectural design services back on October twenty ninth, two thousand nineteen. Whereas on May seventeen, two thousand twenty two, the board authorized library to amend the agreement to increase the architect's compensation by fifty six thousand dollars for environmental weight finding services such as internal and external signage, graphics and book locker wraps, thus increasing the total compensation to the architect of five hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred ninety dollars. Whereas on February sixteen, two thousand twenty three, the board accepted a three hundred thousand dollar grant from the Bruning Foundation to design and create public spaces at the Huff Walls and Woodland Branches. Whereas Moody Nolan submitted proposal, library to prepare construction documents, perform construction administration services for the construction of an amphitheater, rain garden at the Huff Branch for an additional fee of two thousand forty dollars, bringing the architect fee to a total amount not to exceed five hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred thirty dollars, which work will be paid for from the Bruning Foundation grant. Whereas this board finds that the increase in the fees is fair and reasonable, therefore be resolved that the board authorizes executive director, CEO or is designated negotiating, executing amendment to the agreement with Moody Nolan upon such terms and conditions as are approved of the library director of legal affairs, increasing the architect fee by two thousand forty dollars for a total contract amount not to exceed five fifteen, five thirty. The additional two thousand forty being charged to the building and fair fund account, four zero one seven five two zero five dash five five three zero zero one two two one zero, construction improvements. So moved.
Ms. Butt.
Yes.
Ms. Carrie.
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan.
Yes.
Ms. McReagan.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
And Ms. Friar.
And as an aside here, I'm reading more than we usually read at the full board meeting because we're not having a separate finance committee. So making sure the record is clear by reading a little more than I ordinarily would do. Exhibit six is a resolution amending project budget for the Woodland Branch and ratifying agreement for the purchase of shelving. Whereas on July sixth, two thousand twenty one, the board approved total project budgets for the new Woodland Branch, which the board subsequently amended on October twenty first, two thousand twenty one, April twenty twenty two, April nineteen, two thousand twenty two, July twenty one, two thousand twenty two, as shown in exhibit A. And whereas in order to avoid delaying the project on April twenty seventh, two thousand twenty three, the library entered into agreement with the only libraries limited DBA collective services conflict for the purchase, delivery and installation of shelving for the new Woodland Branch. And whereas the total cost of shelving and services provided by collective spaces under the original April twenty seven, twenty twenty year agreement was a hundred and nine thousand five hundred nineteen dollars and eighty eight cents. Whereas the chief operating officer recommends that the total project budget for the Woodland Branch be increased by a hundred and forty thousand as set forth in exhibit A to this resolution to the cover the, cover the costs on the new shelving, the remaining computer and audio visual purchases needed for the new branch. Now therefore be resolved that the board approves the amended total project budget for the Woodland Branch project as set forth in exhibit A to this resolution effective retroactively to April twenty seventh, two thousand twenty three, which expenditures shall be charged to the construction tax exempt fund four oh two and/or the construction taxable fund four oh three. And be it further resolved that the board authorizes the CEO to allocate the budget COO to reallocate the budgeted accounts, set forth in exhibit A for the owners to continually see funds, furniture fixtures and equipment and owner direct costs as needed, provided that such real allocations shall not increase the overall budget approved for each individual project. Be it further resolved that the board hereby ratifies the agreement for the purchase, delivery and installation of shelving entered into by the library April twenty seven, two thousand twenty three, with only library limited doing business as collective spaces for a total cost of a hundred and nine thousand five hundred nineteen eighty eight. The expenditures being charged to construction tax exempt fund four oh two and the construction taxable fund four oh three. And I just, I guess I'm, the, the increase does not include increase to the shelving. That's what I'm confused about.
It's for the overall furniture and equipment account, which includes just that furniture equipment, including the shelf.
Okay.
The shelving was purchased already and that's why there's a ratification.
Okay. All right. I understand that.
And just a point of clarification. So quick, quick word on process, especially for our trustees. When we bring a project budget to board for approval, it's usually the point where the construction managers offer guarantee maximum price amendment. At that point, our furniture is not complete. So we're going to work with a budget for firm construction costs and an estimated furniture cost. In this case, and this was one of the earlier projects, we were using too low a dollar per square foot cost for the furniture. And then in some of the empty branches, we've been able to selectively reuse like these furniture, which has been able to buy down furniture expense. It would have required a total new outfit. So that's why the cost for this branch became a little higher than we expected.
To think the overall budget for this branch was, I forget how much.
That's indicated in the fashion exhibit. So we're up to eight point one million dollars.
Yeah. So this is a hundred and forty thousand, about eight point one. And our changes are still less than ten percent by a mile.
They are in, I'll just notice update on this project that we do have.
That's great.
That was kind of unknown. It's very low.
That's great. So, so moved.
Ms. Butt.
Yes.
Ms. Carrie.
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan.
Yes.
Ms. McReagan.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Friar.
Yes.
Exhibit seven is a resolution modifying buildings to be included in group one B of the facilities master plan. Often said FMP around here, again, for our new people, if you hear FMP, that's what we're talking about. Whereas on June eighteenth, this board approved the selection of Brooklyn Eastman Fleet, Lorraine Memorial, Nottingham Rockport and Sterling Branches for group one B of the facilities master plan. Whereas on September seventeen, two thousand twenty, the board approved modifying group one B of the FMP by delaying the renovation of the Fleet Branch to a later phase due to budgetary considerations. Whereas on November nineteenth, two thousand twenty, this board authorized the library entered our contract with Vokon Partners LLC for architectural design services for the Sterling Branch. And on March eighteenth, two thousand twenty one, this board authorized library to contract with Regency Construction Services Incorporated for pre-construction services for group one B of the FMP. This board authorized both contracts to be charged to the construction tax exempt fund to four oh two. Whereas on September sixteen, two thousand twenty one, the board authorized the library to amend its contract with Vokon to pause their design work on the Sterling Branch while the CMHA worked to develop its neighborhood development plan for the surrounding neighborhood. The CMHA's playing process could, planning process could provide potential opportunities for the future of the Sterling Branch. Whereas CMHA's neighborhood development plan for the Cedar Estates and Central Neighborhood is not yet complete. And the chief operating officer recommends the Sterling project be delayed to a future phase of the FMP or to allow the library to. Or to allow the library to exploit potential neighborhoods for the opportunities. For the Sterling Branch that may arise as a result of CMHA's neighborhood development plan. Now therefore be resolved, the board hereby approves the modification of group one B of the FMP. To include the following branches. Brooklyn, Eastman, Lorraine, Memorial, Nottingham and Rockport. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes the Chief Financial Officer or her designate. To release the remaining encumbered funds from the construction tax exempt fund four oh two. For both the Vokon and Regency agreements for the Sterling Branch. New charge the purchase orders for each contract to the building repair fund account. Four, one, zero, seven, nine, zero, zero, five, dash, five, five, three, zero, zero. Construction improvements.
Can you give a little bit more?
Yeah.
So that everyone understands what's going on.
Yeah. So we initially had Sterling as a part of our one B process and um. Sterling, as you can, uh, as anyone who's been there, it's very small and is also landlocked. Uh, so there's not a lot of room for us to do something additionally. So we were going to just basically do a renovation and with a very small addition. Um, but as we started having conversations with the community. Recognize that they would have liked to have more, the staff would have liked to have more. And um it came to our notice that CMHA was looking to do a complete reall of the estate. And create a new neighborhood plan. And if in their neighborhood plan, they would knock down some of their older buildings, which will give us access to be able to do something bigger with Sterling. So um and also to be a part of their larger plan as they submitted to um, you know, the Department of Housing. So um, we are, I just had a conversation with Jeff Patterson this morning to talk about where they are. And they are uh basically a month from bringing in the Juvenile Justice Center and us. With the plans that they have and where we would fit within those plans. So I think we'd be um in a good space to be a part of phase two.
And at one point we saw some really exciting ideas of what we could do in today's.
Yeah.
How does this play into the Sisters of Charity Health campus that's being contemplated?
So Sisters of Charity is also one of the partners and they're taking over the Juvenile Justice Center. So they would, that's, we are working with them as partners and all of us are like writing letters of support for CMHAs.
Yeah. The other aspect to keep in mind that this is not only a neighborhood that people are trying to redevelop better. But it's also one of the branches that's closest to our downtown, to the main library. So that our considerations of how to do that should probably be in consideration of also what we're doing here. Uh, over the near term. So so I think it's good to move it and and be better prepared for real appropriate operation there.
Well, it's in the right spot and uh we did have a quick conversation about it. I think it's better to wait and get that expansion that is rushing to something right now. Especially when the community says they won't. Todd and Hall. I got that word for council. Rather than give it a shoebox.
Yeah.
So let's just do it right the first time. If you go over the pair allowance, they did that.
Yeah.
They tore down uh old states and they cleared it out, made a perfect building on the side. Uh, best person ever ready to jump out. So which one are we talking about?
The old juvenile courthouse.
The old.
The nuns are talking about trying to rehab that building. It's a great old building. The court couldn't be there anymore, but there's lots of possibilities.
Forty proposals for that building. One of us, the county, do have a, an accessory. Uh, because of the overload of the county jail down here. And I don't think people want to buy into that because I already got a juvenile. Jail down on the farm. Question came. So I'm just putting that that we need to be very careful. But what we could envision with.
Yeah.
Uh, they've already said that we're only. Ward with a juvenile to raise her around and nothing else. The other thing is the St. Vincent's pop up anywhere. I know that they under.
Yeah. So they're also looking, the the great thing is, uh, and right now it. The issue is there's no one really coordinating the full plan. And so they've been trying to to take it and say, okay, we're going to take Cedar Estates and all of that and create that plan. And then we want to bring in the partners. We have other spaces saying, you know, St. Vincent's. Sisters then also are looking at what could be done with the Juvenile Justice Center. And then, oh, of course us and, you know, and Tri C has been doing a lot of work.
Yeah.
So so it's prime, it's just, can it be coordinated? But we've been having lots of meetings. Sneeze has been meeting with the sisters on going for for a very long time. So we're, I think we're in the mix of knowing what's going on, right? We just are just, we we need to have some clarity before we move forward.
It's exciting because you got a school board across the street.
Yeah, yeah. And it's worth it. We need uh it needs to expand.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Did we brief Councilman Starr on on this or preview this with Councilman Starr?
Yeah, we've had conversations with them, numerous conversations with them about where we are.
And she needs to remind me, I, a couple of us ought to be, they're doing some sort of celebration dinner for Sister Ruth.
Oh.
Okay, because I think library, we ought to be able to be, I'm gonna, I'll buy a ticket myself. I'm asking a library to buy tickets. But she's been key to maintaining some of this stuff about the the sisters in the neighborhood. So I think we should be supportive.
Even such good partners.
I think my only concern is, you know, removing Sterling from this is another east side branch and one B is very west side focused. But you all recognize that and I think it is better to than wait for the right timing to get. A better branch. Um, but it is an important neighborhood that's serving serving families with low income more than the others in the one B.
Quite frankly, the only reason we can get away with this because of how John improved the tech. So I don't know if you heard me, John, I said, the only reason, John. One of the only reasons we can do this is because you've improved Sterling with the tech. And and uh people are really happy about it. So it's, you know, gives us time to do this even better is what I'm thinking. So.
And the second?
I'll second.
Miss Buns?
Yes.
Michigan Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Miss Breger?
Yes.
Right.
Exhibit eight is the resolution many project budget for the new MLK junior branch. On February fifteen, twenty twenty two, the board approved a total project budget for the construction of the new Martin Luther King Junior Branch is shown on exhibit A to this resolution. Whereas the administration recommends that the project budget be increased by a total of five hundred and fifteen thousand, which amounts to, which amounts consists of. Budget increases of three hundred and seventy five thousand. The owner's construction contingency, a hundred thousand for furniture fixtures and equipment. And forty thousand for the CPL direct costs. Whereas the increase in the owner's construction contingency budget is needed to cover the cost of a change order. For the exterior canopy of the branch to ensure that sufficient funds are available to address potential changes that may be needed. Due on due to unforeseen conditions during construction. Whereas an increase to the furniture's fixtures, the equipment budget is needed for the procurement of theater quality projector for the new branches AV system. Whereas the increase to the CPL direct cost budget is needed in order to cover the library share. The cost of extending the coverage term of the professional liability insurance policy. Which applies to both libraries and the developers, teams of architects and engineers. Working on the new library project and the apartment tower. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Library Trustees approves the total project budget. For the new MLK branch project is set forth in exhibit A to this resolution. Which expenditure shall be charged to construction tax exempt fund four oh two. And or the construction taxable fund four oh three. And be it further resolved that the Board of Library Trustees authorizes the chief operating officer to reallocate. The budget amount set forth in exhibit A for the CPL contingency fund. FFNE and CPL direct costs and developer shared costs among the various budget categories. So the MLK project is needed, provided such real allocation shall not increase the total approved project budget. So moved.
Okay.
Please stand up.
Yeah. So maybe maybe I'll start out with a little positive and then I get into specifics that are leading us to ask for the increase of the project budget. The project is moving forward. Not sure how many of you have been on your cloud about university stuff recently.
Yes.
Oh, you think I haven't been?
Yeah, I know. I think we're going to try to find an opportunity to invite the board for.
Yeah, we're up to, we're up to how many stories at this point?
Well, we're, you know, we're, we're worried about the bottom two stories.
I understand, but they they're.
They're up to four at the last time.
Okay, good.
Nine stories over by the time. Um, so the project is moving forward. The concrete placements of this lab on grade are scheduled last week, this week, next week, in the fall week. So we'll have a nice concrete back in the middle by the first week of June.
One by the first week of June. She's the what?
Concrete.
Oh, the slab on the concrete, all the concrete floors.
Yeah, thank you.
And the mezzanine for the second floor is in now to structural steel. So this has been a challenging project that's, as you well know from past updates. Um, I I direct your attention to report B that Carrie includes, which shows the change orders for every FMP projects every month. So for the purposes of the resolution, I've kind of highlighted some of the main cost drivers there. That causes to expend the contingency that the board already approved and to ask us to see more. Um, but if you want a list of every item that's been changed, that's that's important. Um, the largest item here is, and then we back up one more time. So when we approach board with our budget, as a reminder, there are three construction contracts involved. There's the podium contract, which is shared between the library and our development partner. Then there's the Lofts project, which is the developer, and then there's the library project. We contributed, the developer led the podium contract and that required some back and forth. Cost contributions. Uh, and then we own the library and they own the Lofts. So the the budget increase now we're seeking is for the library project. But that by opposed some complications. And so when we were ready for our GMP, may recall, the developer was not ready. They had a budget. Overage. And so we held our uh our construction contract for about six month period. This was from the fall of twenty twenty one to the spring of twenty twenty two. And they were ready for standing and brought the contract forward. It was cost escalation that had occurred. We were able to charge that to developers. That went into the developer shared costs, which is shown in exhibit A. Uh, and then there were also, we were also over budget. So we made some assumptions on cost savings we were achieving, doing some value engineering work. In the events, the cost escalation in material and in the construction market kind of evaporated the savings before we were able to achieve them. And so now we're faced. We settled with the developers. There's no opportunity to go back and pin any more of these costs on them. And in fairness, they're internal to the library. But now we're faced with the unforeseen conditions, which are enumerated in the. The largest one we're facing at the moment is the exterior canopy of the building. So our second level has an exterior canopy. Um, that came over budget. We assumed we'd redesign and save money. We weren't able to do it. Explored every opening cranny that we possibly could. Um, we reached a point now where it's necessary to approve the work in order to keep the construction schedule moving. The other large item in this proposed resolution is for the theater quality projector system. Which was not bought out in either uh in the construction contract. Nor did we accurately catch it in our furniture and equipment budgets. Now we're asked to interest that. And then the final part is the extended professional liability shortage, which both owners, the library and the development partners are carrying for the two architects we have on this project. Um, the proration is twenty percent library, seventy two percent developers. We were able to continue that thanks to Brian. Um, so we're only paying one portion of that. Um, altogether, that comes up to the to the half a million dollars per season. Just a few points of reference, I went back to our one A projects to look at the change orders for Huff, Jefferson and West Park. Uh, we had total change orders of six point two percent, seven point nine percent and nine point two percent. Those are all very close to the end of construction, so I don't expect them to change much. At this point, an increase, if if board authorizes the increase I'm seeking, we'd be up to nine point two percent on MLK. Which is more than I would like. We try to get five percent approved realistically, as trustee Corrigan mentioned, inside ten percent, you're kind of doing okay. For new construction, I'd like to do better than that, but for as complicated a project as this was. I think we're in, I think we're in the margin that we could expect. So I hope that wasn't too scattershot. I just wanted to give you kind of paint a picture of where we are with the project, how we got to this point, and then I can answer any questions.
And and I wanted to highlight a couple of things for the board because the design of MLK was so uh important to us at the time. The main uh value engineering things that happened are the canopy went from a solid face aluminum to a mesh. Uh, it didn't save as much as we thought it was going to save, but that was in terms of. If if you can remember what the design looked like. So instead of a solid, and I want to call it reflective, a solid sort of reflective thing, it's now much more of a textured. Element. Um, the big grand staircase on the inside uh went from being. I I guess I'd say went from being more floating and it's less floating now. So if the floating staircase is important to you, it's a big chunk of that's gone. And then um those who were in love with it, I I never thought it was going to work. We were having a glass elevator cab. And we're, we've changed to now it's, it'll be much more standard elevator. And that again affects the design some, but I never thought the glass cab was ever going to work. So. Um, I'm not that surprised. Did I leave out any? If I had to think of the things that we looked at in design that we've had to change.
Well, the the big change, uh, you'll recall, we came way over budget in design developments.
Right.
It went from a full second floor with the with the exception of the rotunda and the skylight to a mezzanine.
Right.
So that was the bit, but that was prior, that was well before bidding.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, for the benefit of the new people especially, but all of us, because it has changed. I mean, we all want to see either see it in person or more pictures of more, but of course it's not quite ready to.
I think this is actually a good time. The finishes will will be going on over the next six months. But I do think once the concrete floor slabs down, this summer might be an opportunity. Depending on board's availability to get it, get it to where I've been in the space recently.
We always love your construction tours. At least I do.
You really do have a, you have a feel now for this open field, just being in that space with exposed columns and mezzanine and skylights. I mean, really, it's going to be a special.
Yeah. The other thing that for the newer board members to know is that the change on the second floor. We preserved what was the the portion that was going for the Anspel Wolf collection. And so the mezzanine that's preserved is the Anspel Wolf aspect. What we're losing is what I would consider more ordinary type square footage space second floor would provide. For, you know, more ordinary library use. Um, so that's, and that was the biggest design change in terms of value engineering. Overall in the project and it's three times these, almost three times as much as the ones I just went through. But um for for uh, the other thing for the new board members to know is. I don't know that we've ever had, first office is the first time we've done. Um, a joint residential airspace uh with a library. Um, so in that sense, it was always going to be, you know, cutting edge and problematic. But we also, um, when you think about what the economy's done in the construction economy in particular. Uh, this developer has been um always kind of facing up against the edge of what they could finance. And so that a lot of the delay has to do with what the developer kept changing on their side of the of the equation. Is that a fair thing to say, John?
It is a fair thing to say, although I I don't want to be unfair to them. You know, we reached the point that the board approved the development agreement between the library and the developer. That kind of, that kind of puts a level to that point in time. And and I can and and conscious say that some of these. Unforeseen conditions that we're facing in our projects, we can pin back to that.
No, no.
Whereas there are still items that come up. And we meet biweekly with the developers. So there are items that come up either in their scope or ours. Where there's, there's a fair cross cross proportion back and forth. They're kind of on the margins, so we're dealing them within the projects. That's, that does still come up. Um, but I would say the relationship is, has been professional since we broke ground.
And and again, it was before broke ground was when most of these things occurred. So it's not like the the relationship on building, the building's been an issue. I always remind people too of Marilyn Mason's great line. In a big public project, you want three things. Quality work on time and on budget. If you're lucky, you can get two of the three. Uh, the Stoke Swing is an example. We got a quality building, except for some of the electrical stuff. And we got uh budget pretty close. We stayed within ten percent of where we were wanted to be. But we were. We stayed within ten percent of where we were wanted to be, but we were nowhere near on time. And on, on MLK, the time thing went a lo- a long time ago, but we're still fighting and, and have real good chances at still getting the, the two that matter, which is, uh, quality building and a budget that we can live with. So, so there's a lot to be proud of in that MLK project. And we've never built a twelve million or thirteen million dollar branch before either. So it's a unique project in that sense, so.
The neighborhood said they wanted it to be iconic, so.
And it will. Thank you, John.
And as a reminder, it's a twenty million dollar.
Uh, that's what I just, I, I, I saw that.
Yeah.
I'm like, they're a little bit off.
And the library expense is the, it's nearly fifteen million, but there's a five point two million dollars in the sale of our parcel, which went into the project. So we're not spending those dollars, but it's definitely, it's paid for by the developer.
Yeah, no, I, I, I just spent doing a budget, doing a branch for more than five million in my thirty five years was unusual. So that we were always hit twice, at least twice. And when you take in the developer and the other aspect, it's really four times, but it's.
I wonder what you have with them on, uh?
Right.
Iconic, uh, ranch.
Right.
Ranch.
Did we vote?
Talk about.
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Um, yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
And Ms. Fryer?
Yes. I'm a yes too. I think, I think I got skipped.
Exhibit nine, a resolution authorizing agreement for engineering services or repair replacement of parking lot services at the Jefferson, West Park and Lake Shore Memorial Nottingham campuses. Whereas the property management department has determined the parking lot surfaces at Jefferson, West Park and Lake Shore Memorial Nottingham, campuses are beyond their service lives, are in need of resurfacing or replacement. Whereas the parking lot resurfacing or replacement work was previously excluded from the scope of the facilities master plan projects due to budgetary limitations. And whereas the library's property management department has since determined that it's necessary to retain the services of an engineering design professional, prepare project documents and specs that will later assist with the bidding and contract administration for this needed work. Whereas pursuant to higher revised code one fifty three point seven one, on the estimated cost of professional design services for a particular project will be less than fifty thousand. The library may select a professional design firm among qualified design firms on file as opposed to rebidding or, or re RFP. Whereas Karpinski Engineering has proposed to provide engineering design services related to the resurfacing or replacement of the parking lot surfaces at Jefferson, West Park and Lake Shore Memorial Nottingham photo cost not to exceed forty eight thousand dollars. And whereas the library has determined that Karpinski Engineering is the most qualified firm among the firms on file to fu- perform the engineering services, such as conducting field investigations and developing design documents for future bidding, and finds that Karpinski's engineering's fee to be fair and reasonable. Now therefore, it be resolved that the board authorizes executive director, CEO, or is designated negotiating, executing agreement with Karpinski Engineering, subject to the review and approval of the Director of Legal Affairs for the engineering design services described in Karpinski Engineering's proposal for the Jefferson, West Park and Lake Shore Memorial Nottingham campuses for the total contract price not to exceed forty eight thousand dollars to be charged to the general fund account one two one zero 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 five three dash five three seven one zero professional services. So moved. And then, John, if I can just ask you, wasn't there something unique about our Jefferson, uh, water, surface water collection on the parking lot and that, that adjacent area?
We've got, um, wire retention swell at Jefferson, uh, that's part of the new projects.
Yeah.
Um, we did, uh, we're, we're under the change order, we did reroute the underground duck banks.
Right.
Stormwater management, which was a unforeseen condition during the construction of the FMP project.
Right.
Um, the, the parking lots at West Park and Jefferson were in early design phase as part of the FMP projects for those two branches. Value engineer out to make budget. Um, in retrospect, this was a pay me now or pay me later situation and now it's later. Um, so we, we had hopes, you know, we'd be able to save money on the project and still have these parking lot surfaces. Drives me crazy when I'm out there because of the damage it took during the course of construction. So in retrospect, I think we should have sought a larger budget from you, uh, from the jump. We got this done in the FMP work, we didn't, but I think it's needed now. And then Lake Shore, uh, the intention there is not going to be a full, in my estimation, is not going to be a full depth paving replacement for the entire campus. The intention rather is while we're, um, deciding the long-term future of Lake Shore Memorial Nottingham branch, to make sure that we're providing a safe surface. So I, 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 what I'm going to work with Karpinski on is to get a scope of services. That's an overlay or a patch repair or a crack repair or a partial replacement.
Yeah.
Um, just to kind of get us to the next, it won't be a thirty year project, it'll be another two, five to ten.
And for those board members who don't know, that the parking lot that is there, that is deteriorating is from, built at the time of the original Villancho High School. So it's at this point, at least fifty years old.
Yeah. Needs some love.
Yes.
And the second?
Second?
Ms. Buds?
Yes.
Ms. Carrion?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
And Ms. Fryer?
Yes.
And the balance of the Finance Committee report is a fiscal officer's report, report A, that reported investments, report B, report on conference and travel expenditures, report C. I just wanted, I always like to make sure, yep. And report on expenditures made from the contingency fund for Huff Jefferson, West Park, Woodland Central Distribution Facility, the Rain Eastman MLK Junior, Brooklyn and Rockport. That's the report E that previously we've been referred to, and is really worth reviewing if you haven't looked at it closely. And a, and report F, the report on expenditures made from the owner's contingency fund for the high density shelving project, report F. And if you haven't seen that.
That's what I was just going to say.
You really, you should really go see that. I, I kidded somebody the other day and I said, uh, what's the largest secret? Uh, that, not that it is secret, but what's the largest unknown seven million dollar construction project going on in Cleveland, Ohio? And it's that we are redoing the high density shelving and not curtailing services, closing libraries, doing anything other than keeping our customers happy while we basically rebuild for the future on an expenditure we made at the outset when this building was built that's permitting us to do this. So, uh, it's, if you haven't taken up Mike Ruffin's offer to give you a tour, you should see and see all that we're doing. And it's just as much fun to find out how we're keeping all those materials still available while we're moving them. So that patron looks for something, we, we don't say things like, sorry, we're in a big shelving project, you have to wait a month to get that book. That's not happening, which is really something I think is, is really major, so.
Michael wants everybody to know he's available today.
That concludes the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Trustee Corrigan. We're now going to move into the Human Resource Committee report. Trustee Hairston, please.
Exhibit ten, Cleveland Public Library, uh, that covers from April first to Thursday. I see that we are beginning to hire people again, which I think is great. We have four resignations, two terminations, one retirement, and one, uh, say prior form, death for our employees. I move that we approve, uh, this exhibit.
Second.
Ms. Buds?
Yes.
Ms. Carrion?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Fryer?
There's a Mr. Brian Scharder, thirty eight years of service custodian of Rockport Branch. His return is, uh, four twenty eight, twenty three three. A citation has been issued to him for, for his fellowship and his service that he's given us for thirty eight years. And as the director says, one of these days he'll get all the retirees together and he's going to pay for them and have a nice party out of his. I move that we accept this exhibit.
Second.
Under those conditions.
Ms. Buds?
Yes.
Ms. Carrion?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Fryer?
Yes.
And this next exhibit, which is exhibit twelve, resolution authorized agreement for, uh, Y two recruited seven. One simple question, John, more I read this, that I did notice beautiful presentation that you said made today. Would this close the gap? Employees that you're trying to find?
I'm very hopeful that it will close the gap. One of the, um, major issues in the IT community amongst all, uh, all professions. So it is very difficult to recruit and bring in talent because everyone is having the same issue. I serve with, uh, uh, all the regional CIOs in the area. This is the number one topic that we all talk about is, um, attaining talent and keeping talent. Because if you got good ones, we're poaching each other. So, um, our traditional ways of recruiting, um, through our standard, uh, bulletin boards and so forth are just not effective enough. So this should, uh, help us tremendously.
Does he give you everything that you're looking for?
Yes.
I move the, the adopted exhibit twelve, let me read the first part of the place. Cleveland Public Library Human Resource Department has a goal of building a larger and more robust and thorough IT department to assist library employees with the daily issues inherent in a computer, in computer hardware, software, and workplace technology. We have resolved that the executive director, CEO, or his designees hereby authorize the entry to the necessary agreements between Cleveland Public Library and Robert Half International, uh, to perform the recruitment consultant services for a proposed fee of twenty five percent of each hard credit annual starting salary. For a total proposal, that means you go pay on less, so we have to pay twenty five percent, right? Okay, just kidding. Of the starting salary for a total proposal, uh, estimated cost got to see, got to exceed a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for placement for the vacancy IT department included acquisitions, which ninety five thousand should be charged general fund account. Uh, one one five one zero zero five three dash five three seven one zero professional services. And sixty five thousand should be charged to the Cleveland Special Revenue Funds, uh, account. Two three one three zero one zero three dash five three seven one O professional services, and which agreement should be accepted through review and approval of the Director of Legal Affairs.
Second.
Ms. Buds?
Yes.
Ms. Carrion?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Very good. Uh, I have to bring something up. We have a very robust meeting and thanks to Lynn and Brian and, uh, our director and, of course, our president, we have not missed the human resource meeting. Um, and it's very, very interesting because we did a lot of questions, uh, asked, and a lot of answers coming back. Just trying to tie up, figure out a way sometime just to serve this robust kind of conversation we had. One other one, we dealt with, uh, pages. We all know, noticed that we had about forty slots of pages. Um, I like next month that we have this full disclosure on what we're doing about recruitment, especially around the area of diversity. What we're doing about training, what we're doing about placing, uh, our pages, because it does not make too much sense that we have the slots and we have the funds that we don't have the people. So not that we all agree with that, so that's a part of the, the next two weeks. Have a robust discussion about that. And I was saying we all agree.
And to conclude, the lone exhibit twelve and Ms. Fryer?
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Hairston. We're now going to move into the Community Service Report in lieu of Mr. Parker's absence. Trustee, uh, Buds will be reviewing the report.
So the report G, uh, is our monthly activity report, which I'm always so impressed with being able to see it in a graphic view and compare all the different branches and compare. Just, just everything on here is done so helpfully to understand the circulation and electronic and, um, the wifi use and computer use. So I urge you to check every bit of this out.
Clearly, West Park is open again.
Yes, it's not way open again. Look how it's zooming up, ten, more than ten thousand circulation there.
Was there something special at Langston Hughes for that to be different, so different from prior year?
Yeah, well, Langston Hughes branch manager just happened to be with us here.
Well, I didn't expect this. Well, uh, I can tell you at Langston Hughes, we recently had a jazz concert.
I was wondering about that.
In, in April, April is Jazz Appreciation Month, and we were able to welcome back, uh, twenty five of our patrons who kept asking when we were going to have a concert. Because we had kind of shut down things for the pandemic. He's been keeping, uh, a close eye on the attendance since last October. And I take attendance every day, and I can tell you from yesterday, we get ninety seven people coming our branches today. So we're, we're trying to expand things and open things back up in the community.
That's wonderful. That's very cool.
And I've never had, uh, attended one of those that was wonderful, those April jazz events. We're glad to do that.
I'll get it, don't worry. So I just want to, um, also have everybody check right next to their desk. Just today, this article came out, Eurovisitors, More eBooks, the pandemic's long lasting effects on Cleveland area libraries. Um, and it's a really good story talking about, you know, how libraries have transitioned during the period where since we've been closed. And then you always worry when the, you know, cleveland.com calls and wants to talk to you about your numbers and statistics. But it's a very fair story and it's, uh, something that I think, um, you know, then if you have an opportunity just to, to look at it, it's very kind of short. Um, but it gives kind of an overview of how CCL and Cleveland Public Library both have been working to bring their numbers up and what we've been doing during that period as, as far as programming.
So I will very accept that report, um, that, um, before G.
Like, does it have to be voted on?
We've.
Thank you, Nancy, for putting it together.
Thank you.
Yes, Nancy gets big applause for this. Um, so we have anything more for building status update? You told us a lot, but there's maybe more.
Just to add that we're, um, in the home stretch on our number one B projects, looking forward to reopening the rain in June, June seventeenth. Today we're holding, I know the ribbon cutting team and the director agreed with the invitations out of just superstitions about the fire marshal who's doing final inspections.
You think it's June seventeenth, you said? What day the week is that?
It's Saturday.
Oh.
The neighborhood will be happy because they have three branches closed all at the same time.
Eastman's not far behind, we're looking at an August opening for, uh, Eastman, we're not at the final inspections yet, but we're very far along.
No, I'm just saying, because I do it in the neighborhood, as does some of us, and between having Eastman, Walls, and Lorraine all closed at the same time.
Is there any news on Walls?
Yeah.
Since you mentioned Walls, we did resume meeting, um, with the Canadian Development Corporation, so that's Northwest neighborhoods. They were successful with their ARPA requests from Kiowa County, and they've got a similar request into Cleveland. And of course, that's been in the news very much recently, that what council's going to do with all of the harbor projects. So if they're successful with their Cleveland request, then they'll have secured their gap financing. We've been sitting on our budget this whole time. We, we could be rebidding the project as early as the summer for potentially a fall groundbreaking. If they don't get the ARPA funding from the city, then we're going to have to take a step back and figure out what we do like that, so.
Yeah, on Monday, I want to tell you that, uh, we had a, uh, we had that, uh, people were astonished at how much room it was out. I'm not sure what word, but I just got to say, because that's where I am. I would have so much glass. I have so much sunshine.
Daylight, yeah.
And a lot of our buildings that were built on the east side of town had no windows. I must go out, like you guys paid attention. Whenever we go out, that is my school. That came up over and over there. So that record was there. It's so spacious, so spacious. If anybody gets a chance, go over there because they turned out, they took out that old raggedy building. When they put up four of a house.
Yeah, they're going to put, actually, I don't know if it's going to be affordable, but they're going to put housing over there. Yes, so, yeah.
John, tell, tell me the address you want us to check out again. I didn't hear all of it.
The Huff Light.
You mean the new building? It's all in there.
If you haven't been back since the opening, it's amazing.
You gotta go, yeah, if you haven't been there.
I just wanted to let you know the compliments.
So the bio swell will be cool.
You know, and but one of the things that the trustee, you know, Harrison brought to me was just the attention. We had a young boy, probably thirteen, and he brought his sister in, it was probably eight. And he came to trustee Harrison and asked him if he could go in and get food, right? And, you know, you know, the thought of like, why aren't you in school right now? Or anything of that nature is, right? They just, they were just there trying to get a meal. Yeah, it's, it just speaks to kind of, you know, you know, what the importance of what we do, so.
Yeah.
Everybody did was, you seen it, I don't know what took everybody's time. He only got one off it. He went behind the stack with his little sister.
I would have packed them a lot.
We did.
Yeah, we did. We, we got them afterwards to come up. They actually cut the ribbon, so we made sure that they cut the ribbon and all of that, so.
So what's your name? My name is Avery.
Yeah.
But she, when she grabbed the scissors, oh, she became Miss Avery.
That is true.
You know, you reminded me of something in connection with John's presentation earlier about being to broadcast the Wi-Fi. It's not just sixty dollars a month and seventy-five, that's a problem. In connection with my, working with the Cleveland schools because of what my wife's doing. The mayor's proposal is to, with the C group, is to get it to eighteen dollars a month. And just a rough survey of some of the family support specialists said that's still a barrier. Eighteen is still a barrier for many of these families. So it, it's good that for a large group of additional people who'd be able to afford better broadband. It, it's important, but to think that that's going to solve it, eighteen dollars a month is still a hell of a burden for somebody's.
Another question, we did get a grant for planting that bioswale or working on the back behind. How is any, like, will we already be starting wildflowers or something in the summer now?
The plantings are, you have, the plantings are in the buyer retention. The brewery grants, you're putting kind of an amphitheater structure.
That's what they were talking about, the amphitheater part of it.
And the resolution that we're disapproved a few moments ago is we've got our architect going.
Oh, so that might happen this summer, some of it.
We're meeting with the construction manager Thursday to start discussing how we're going to do it. This summer might be, this summer will be optimistic, but definitely.
But I'm sure, I mean, it looked great already, you had the opening.
This will be an enhancement.
Yeah.
And something else got jogged my memory, how's our forty-five-year-old catuplet tree doing?
Looks good.
Looking good?
Yeah. I looked at it, it's because you just, I checked it out every time.
Well, and I don't want to scare you, a catuplet's always the last one to leave and stuff. So in, in every winter, you're sure the catuplet tree's not coming back. And then it's the last tree that comes back. But, but there's a great old catuplet tree that's on the back corner of that project, so.
So do we have something from the advocacy task force?
Yes. Really quickly, as a follow-up to the state government roundup, Sherri specifically with regard to the state budget. As you know, the budget passed out of the House, so far so good for the PLO. It's now to Senate, you're hearing testimonies. The last acre for any go on is tomorrow. Then once it goes out of Senate, you know, to go to conference committee. And then the governor signs or he doesn't sign. So, so far so good, unless the director you have.
Thank you for sitting in, nice to have you.
That's very good. We weren't sure that this would be that good, were we? A foundation update.
Yes, and just in alignment with our strategic goal to create campuses. I think you all are aware that we were awarded a seven-figure gift by a national funder for public art that we will bring to the board next month for consideration. And then I will be giving a Cleveland Reads year-to-date update at the next quarter.
Kudos to Sunita and her staff. Seven-figure gifts are the gift that keep giving. So we love those. We go that far.
And I missed Saturday or the, or the, the whole, the whole weekend because I was in Pennsylvania. So something about, something square in there.
Oh, the public school, well, Erica's here, Erica?
Yes. So the summer super celebration we had last Friday was amazing.
On Friday it was, yeah.
Yeah, the, the rain held off, very excited, thankful for that. So, but we had a number of families come out. We had plenty of giveaways and everybody was just really excited. Our guest speaker, our keynote speaker, Jerry Craft, people were really engaged. People came up to speak to him after. I think someone from Welsh Academy was there and they want to bring him back. So it was great. And I thank everybody. I know we had a lot of volunteers. I saw a lot of your faces there. So just thank you so much for making this event a great success.
Yeah, thanks to Erica. Erica, what had pneumonia and was out there working? I said, stay away from me, but he was working, I'm like, walking pneumonia, so that's, that's the commitment.
I didn't want to miss it. Like, I told my young, I didn't want to hear from everybody, like, oh, it was great. I wanted to see, see it for myself. It was a vision that we just started with an idea, so I wanted to see that come to life. So I was happy, I'm very glad.
How was girl about?
How was it? That was amazing, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had a close to five hundred people for that, for that event, for the first time. We used both buildings and the young ladies had a wonderful time.
Nice.
Thank you.
Super news. Anything on university equity and inclusion updates?
Yes. Afternoon. So a couple things, I continue to partner with HR on a couple of different things in terms of the advocate, applicant interview process, employee engagement and appreciation, and an overview of CPO policies through a DEI perspective. I am also working my way around to attend all of the service department meetings. So, so far I've attended the youth service department meeting, the public service department meeting here at Maine, and several others from when I first started in Mars. So I'm a little over two months here now. I've addressed several patron and employee concerns as it relates to DEI and accessibility and belonging. As far as our employee resource groups, we have a number of different things coming up, one of which will be this Saturday. Hopefully you all can stop out to the Cleveland Asian Festival. Our multicultural ERG will have a booth set up there. We'll have Twister Girl. We'll have a number of giveaways, books for our patrons and activities for them to come out and enjoy. We'll also be promoting our Cleveland Reads initiative, so stop out and see us. Also, in a celebration of Asian-American Pacific Islander Heritage Month here at CPO, we'll have an internal lunch and learn session. Here we will have a guest speaker, Cheryl DeMello, who will talk about the Asian despair and building cultural understanding. So that will be on May twenty-third, May twenty-third at eleven a.m. It'll be held via Teams. So all staff are able to attend as their schedules permit. So we're inviting everybody to come on and learn a little bit more about Asian-American Pacific Islander Month. So, and, and how that, you know, has impacted Asian-Americans throughout the years in terms of migration movement from their homeland. Let's see what else we have going on. Coming up in June, we have a couple of different things going on with our Rainbow Readers. So we will have a lunch and learn session from the LGBTQ of Greater Cleveland. We will have Lizzie Majoric, she will be doing on June first, she will do a lunch and learn here for our employees on pronouns one-on-one. So we will have that session that will also be hosted via Teams at eleven a.m. June third, we will be marching in Pride and CLE. We'll also have a booth there as well, so come and join us. We'll also be giving out Rainbow Reader swag. So come hang out with us. We also have, we've done a sponsorship, so we will be in the LGBTQ of Greater Cleveland. I'm drawing a blank here in terms of the name of the, the, the actual pamphlet that will be listed in, but we have put our, our publication in there as well. We will have an author, an advocate, an LGBTQ plus author, George M. Johnson, who will be here for an evening event on June seventh. His topic will be banned books. He'll have a meeting greet from five-thirty to six, and then he'll, he'll speak on banned books. And then he'll conclude with a Q and A. And also he'll do some book signing at the end. So that'll be here at Maine.
When is Saturday?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
What day is Saturday?
June seventh.
June seventh. He is, he is one of the most banned books. His book is one of the most banned books out there currently.
Can you send us an email about that? I really, I can remember a lot of that.
What's the name?
So I know one of his major books right now is All Boys Aren't Blue.
Yeah, All Boys Aren't Blue. That book is the most, that, that book is.
The group is really excited, they've been pushing for two years, so they're all over.
So he will be here, so come join us.
June seventh.
So yeah, June seventh, so it'll be from five-thirty to eight, we'll conclude things at eight. Last month, we talked about Talk on Tuesdays, our women's ERG, and their mentor equity initiative. So we do have several branches who have volunteered to pilot this initiative. So we're actually meeting today to start some preliminary discussions surrounding that. So we had a lot of people reach out and express interest. And also we had some people, some different, some different levels here at Maine express interest in terms of wanting to have some participation as well. So we're excited about that. Our, our Latinos, Hundos ERG, forgive me, I took German. So they committed a five-hundred-hour sponsorship for Cinco de Mayo to support the Mexican arts and cultural and community service community. They had their Cinco de Mayo Gala on May fifth from sixteen-eleven, so we did do a sponsorship with that. Coming up for Juneteenth, we will have partnered, our Black ERG has partnered with the Greater Cleveland Alliance Freedom Fest, which will be June seventeenth, which is a Saturday. We will have a booth there. We are now working to have a couple of art authors there as well to hand out books reflective of the community that we serve. It's been brought to my attention that although we have a number of different books, a large variety of books here at CPO, that one of the, the challenges that we face is that we could have a more diverse selection reflective of the community that we serve in terms of Hispanic authors, Asian authors, African-American authors. It's not that we don't have them, it's just that we can have more of them.
Hold on, hold on, one second, because you're missing one point, which is really important. The point is, in the books that we're giving away.
Right, right.
So we're, we have, you guys have all seen the books that we have, the hundred thousand books that we've been giving away. There's not a lot of diversity among the books that are given away. And so what I had talked to Ashley about was, let's work with local authors and get them to, we will purchase the books and we will give them away and they can do book signings and give them away. So that we're giving the community, not only a community office, but someone, a fellow that, that they can take and drink or whatever.
On Day of the Dead, we did give a lot of Hispanic ones away.
Thank you, Director. So yes, so we will, we are working with a number of local authors to make that happen. But then we will start that initiative with our Juneteenth celebration on June seventeenth as we participate in the Freedom Fest. So that's with our Black ERG. So those are the updates that I have for you all thus far. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. And that concludes the Community Services Report.
Thank you, trustee Butts. At this time, there's no old or new business. I do have a couple items I'm going to make. First and foremost, the employees that we have here at CPO, they are very important to us. And we do care about their safety and their well-being. So I did get, I did see an email from the director about an employee that was assaulted at the Addison branch. And his car was stolen, his car happened to be a Kia or, I, I mean, one of those two. And I know personally, my daughter has a Kia. And I know personally, in the city of Cleveland, they were giving away the clubs for free for any, and I had to get my daughter one for herself. I went there, so when I saw this, you know, and our employees are so important to me and to this whole board and everyone, I reached out to the director and I said, look, can you look into this to make sure our employees are safe and they get the proper tools so that their cars are still outside when they come in? You know, it's just not here in Cleveland, but it's everywhere. So I want to congratulate the director and Harriet for taking it from there and making sure that the employees, do you want to add to that? Please tell them, I mean, I, I did mention that Cleveland had them to let employees know.
You say the power was stolen and somebody was assaulted?
Yes.
It was, yeah.
Shut up. And I want to personally thank Director Boines. Director Boines is the one who really took it and drove it with his team to ensure that we worked with the Kia USA to give the items for us. And without hesitation, they did support that. Director Boines aligned everything downtown, made sure that his team had a listing of names so that the staff members who are impacted will be able to get those items received. And I want to thank my two RDs, the regional directors, East and West. They personally came downtown with their vehicles to pick up all of the items for the branches so that they would not have to drive. So I'm thankful to them and to Ms. Hudson, who is Senior Director of Branches because they all coordinated and worked together. I'm a strong team. Mr. Malcolm, okay? They work together very well. And I want to add, as it relates to Hyday, Director Boines is also working with Hyundai to receive at least forty-eight of the clubs for our staff members who are impacted and have Hyday as well. So again, thank you for bringing to Director Thomas's attention, Director. Thank you for entrusting it for us to be able to handle this.
No, and you know, on behalf of this board, it's very important that our staff are safe at all times. And I just, you know, it's just information we could out in our community. And I think it's something important that the staff know, we do want you to be safe and your property safe at all times. So I do thank you, and thank you so much for going extra mile. But the other thing, I do want to give a shout out to Forrest at West Park. I was a mystery reader at OLA, it's a Catholic school on the west side of Rocky River Drive, Our Lady of Angels. And I went, my goddaughter goes there, so I went in there and I read to the children one of the stories. We also gave out gifts from the Cleveland Reads program. We also gave out gifts from the Cleveland Reads program to all the children, and they did a big shout out on their bulletin about that. But one of the things the teacher asked, um, was, how did they go about getting library cards? So once again, I was in a parking lot, I called the director, the director passed it on to Forrest. And they all received applications, um, to apply for their library cards. I know it's attached to the CMSD, thank you to Malcolm, but these are Catholic schools, so it's that, the connection hasn't been made yet. There's a challenge, there's a challenge. So Forrest went ahead and, uh, provided the school, and just about every student brought back the form filled out, ready to go. Within a week's time of me asking the director to. So I do wanna, thanks again, and a big shout out. So I know we're working on another school right now that my other nieces go to, so they keep their efforts busy.
O L A is very close to our reopened West.
Right, 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 so, yeah, yeah, yeah. So my other nieces go to Our Lady of Mount Carmel, so they heard I was over there, so now it's like, why can't it come over here?
Got a lot of work.
But I did want to give a shout out for how quickly things get done, not only, you know, for, for the staff, for the employees, and for the community. It sometimes just takes a phone call or just acknowledging something that is taking place, so I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Alright, so my directors point out, just, um, sake of time, just mentioned one thing. Um, I had, uh, I attended the Library Journal's Public Library Safety Summit. And Monroe joined the Mia Dalby and Angela Gunther. And I think it was an eye-opener for us, and, you know, I go and I talk to directors all the time. And I hear all of the issues they're facing around public safety. But I think it was even more, because we had two hundred and fifty attendees from over a hundred libraries there. You just hear the type of things that are happening, the number of folks are dealing with shootings inside their library. Continual violence around them, uh, and they're just kind of really trying to stumble through. How we are going to work through this as libraries, we haven't had this level of violence find its way into our libraries. Nearly as much it is touching us now, and all of these libraries are just trying to work through the process. And, you know, the summit was with the idea that, you know, all of us would have an opportunity to hear some of the success stories that others have had. And so I spoke to them about Monroe and, and the things he's been able to do. As far as, you know, kind of give significant, uh, you know, assurance for our staff, right? You know, in our, our survey, our security team received the only exceptional score, right? So, and, so, so, you know, so I think, you know, it, it is, you know, to that. It just mentioning the fact that unfortunately, you know, there are significant safety issues. Um, you know, I just in a, just, we started to meet with the city and CMSD and on this group. To discuss how we can create this, uh, safer community, and Eric just was very clear. I mean, this, I'd say this only in the sense that we all have to recognize that this is, we're not going to get out of this easy and soon. And he was talking about the fact that he had never had to deal with a week in which four different parents had been caught fighting their kids. Going on the buses to fight kids, because they don't feel like the security is doing enough, so they have to go and protect their kids. Right? And it is, it is, he is just, you know, as, as all of us are, are just surprised by where we're at now. But we just can't, you know, we can't give up, right? We have to keep doing the work, we have to keep trying to find ways to make ourselves and our places safer.
There was one, uh, I was just wanna, everybody, uh, knows that I always kind of care about our fiduciary duties to the central collection, the stuff we have. And again, uh, between the Cleveland State Library collection of photographs. And, and what we have are, it's the largest repositories who publish photos in public hands in the whole world. And, um, I noticed that the Center for Local and Global History Library Assistant Kristen Gellwood inventoried nineteen hundred photos this week. Or this month from the Cleveland City Hall collection, and that she can't scan and inventory it. It's to show information about twenty-six Cleveland city directories from eighteen sixty-one to eighteen eighty-seven. Um, that's just fabulous, and something occurred to me, John, while you were talking, John Malcolm. And that is, um, as people examine the possible uses for Chat GPT. And, and what AI might be able to do for us. Of the, between the roughly four million photos, I think, between what Cleveland State and we have, is that right, John Skurdic? Something like that, probably more. The library science on those photos is ten percent of what we'd hold as a standard for a book or other things that we have in our collection. And if there be a way, and maybe there's somebody out there will fund a grant for it, to see about the possible uses of Chat GPT. Or, or those similar, um, AI inventions that are going on to help catalog. And do the library science that photos require. And, and, um, sometimes AI, because of its, um, uh, supercomputer capacities. Can do things that we haven't thought about doing, um, before. So, um, nineteen hundred pictures in, in, that, in Kristen's project is amazing. But we've got four million of these things that don't have the library science done on it. And I, I think we really have a fiduciary duty, since we're the only ones in public hands. Uh, Bitman Archive, Microsoft, and Getty, they're not gonna do it. Um, and I think, I think if there's something we can do there, so I throw that out as a challenge to you, John, and, and, and thank you for all you're already doing.
Thank you. Um, lastly, uh, we do have a public, uh, comment from, and Mr. Stasko, the subject is life, it's very lengthy. And would it exceed the time that we allow for public comment? But I will be putting it on the record, so if anybody wants to read it in its entirety.
And what, and what's the topic?
Life.
Oh, okay.
The subject line is life, so I'm gonna be, go ahead, it's very lengthy, it's about. L I F E, life. It's about ten, fifteen pages in its entirety, so it wouldn't exceed our time, so I'm not gonna go ahead and read it. But I will be putting it on, uh, the record for anybody who would, uh, want to.
And, and I want to apologize for missing the Cleveland Reads and stuff, my son graduated from University of Arizona Law School. So I was in Arizona, but since I hadn't been in Arizona in fifty years. I did take advantage to look at two of their newest, uh, libraries, and John, they can't touch us. They just, I mean, you know, they're, the, in, in one sense, the sad thing, now, windows are a problem in Arizona, I guess, because of heat and stuff. But everything we've learned that was said about the Huff Branch, about the building needs to be open and inviting. And Adobe-type architecture is a little bit enclosing anyway. But these modern branches they've built are very, um, they were very nice, but they were dissatisfying to me. As invitations of, of a place to go or a place to sit and look. And, um, and that was in sharp contrast to, hadn't been there in fifty years, it's amazing how beautiful the desert and. Uh, and when you, if you're there in May, I, I spent three hours in the Desert Museum and outdoor. I've never, I didn't know cactus bloom flowers. More cacti flowers in my life than I saw on this trip, so.
At this time, I call meeting adjourned.